Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 21st, and I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Caver Select Board to order. The time is six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page of our website for a listing and application. At this time, could we all stand for the pledge?
Pledge of the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend would like to give his community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Okay, as always, first we'll have citizens' participation. Just as a reminder, all statements made during citizens' participation, public comments period should be kept to a maximum of three minutes. The citizens' participation session shall be up to 10 minutes per meeting. Is there anyone that would like to come up to the mic? Seeing no one approach the mic. Okay. Move on to our 605 agenda item, which is a happy occasion, the recognition of Sophie Bumpus on turning 105 years old on May 24th, 2024. Again, do we have to do anything with this other than we, just a recognition and that's all set? And is no one here from Ms. Bumpus's family?
You can mail it to her.
Okay, we've got a citation. Yeah, congratulations. And I was reading here that I guess Sophie was the postmaster of the South Caver Post Office before retiring at the age of 72. Very impressive, 105. All right. Now, if the board would oblige me, we'd like to take an item out of order. Our finance director is here now, and I'd like to take advantage of moving the Article 8, to rescind the vote of the Select Board meeting on April 23rd, 2024, to remove the following article, the transfer of Cranberry Village funds to the stabilization fund. Are there any concerns moving this out of order? No? Okay. It's our finance director, Karen Prevail. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Select Board members. Through you, Mr. Chair. The reason we're rescinding this order, there was a duplication in accounting last year when the enterprise closed. The Cranberry Village enterprise had a balance of $280,172 in it. When that enterprise closed, the money was moved into the general fund, and at the same time, money was moved from the stabilization into the general fund. So we're rescinding the vote to transfer money from the Cranberry Village enterprise back into stabilization because the money was rolled into the free cash numbers and was closed out at the end of the fiscal year. During that transfer, we cut a check for $262,831.40 from the money that was transferred from the stabilization fund to the Cranberry Village Association. And next week, the balance of $17,338.82 will be paid to the Cranberry Village. But this is the reason why we had to rescind this vote, due to a duplication in the accounting of these proceeds.
Are there any questions from the board? Attorney Corbo?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Greg Corbo, Town Council. I'm sorry, we haven't actually met yet. So my understanding from being at town meeting last year was that when the enterprise fund closed, we were not able to take those funds directly from the enterprise fund and pay them from Cranberry Village. So what we did was we had an appropriation from the stabilization fund for purposes of paying the residents of Cranberry Village. And my understanding, the intent was, was that at this town meeting, we'd sort of take that free cash and put it back into the stabilization fund.
That was my understanding also.
My understanding as well.
Okay, so within the free cash currently, and the budget is being used to balance the budget and fund different transfers that are occurring, I think what happened, and you're correct, at the end of the fiscal year, when an enterprise closes, there's auditing and there's different accounting functions that have to occur by DOR, and you're not allowed to use those funds until the balance has been certified. What should have happened is that, and that's why you use money from stabilization, you transfer money to stabilization so that you could pay the Cranberry Village Association and then replenish it. What should have happened is that once DOR had approved the enterprise fund money to be relinquished, then it should have been transferred back into stabilization fund. I mean, it could go through, it could have gone into free cash and back, but that transaction occurred two times. One, from the Cranberry Village being transferred back into the general fund, plus the stabilization. So there is no existing free cash in this fiscal year to cover that transfer of funds and replenishing the stabilization fund in those $280.
So we would need to either reallocate free cash to cover this intent, it sounds like to me, of making sure that the money that was intended to go back into the stabilization fund is voted on and does go back in there. So we'd have to either find that money, that's the only one option I can think about. I'm not sure what other options we have on the table, but if the intended town meeting was to replenish the stabilization fund from the free cash money, we'd have to probably honor that. So it either would have to be a separate article, which we don't have today, or we'd have to make, probably come up with a way to do that. You know, we either, you know, take free cash down by that amount and have a subsequent article at a either different town meeting or special town meeting to do that? Just throwing options out here as to what we need to do to reconcile this.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. The money would be coming from free cash because the money from the enterprise fund went into the general fund, which rolled into free cash. So whether it's done, and you would, if you were to reallocate the balance of free cash revenue that you're going to be using to fund other capital projects and you wanted to include that, that is an option. Or we, you could wait until later in the year, once we have had a chance to reconcile FY '24, look to see what available funds would be available, and then come, you know, back to town meeting and reauthorize that transfer back into the stabilization fund. I think, you know, as I had mentioned before, there's a lot of, you know, housekeeping items that have to be done, you know, reconciling and working with the auditors just to have our financial statements produced for FY '23. So I think there could be additional revenue, you know, in terms of free cash later in the, in the year, especially when we, you know, have the final number through the Conference Committee for State Aid. But those are, you know, opportunities where you could come back through the Select Board to town meeting to authorize that transfer.
Through, Mr. Ryan.
Just to follow on, could Article, proposed Article 2 for town meeting be modified on the floor to, to add that category? Or is that stretching it because it's not posted that way? Or with that article, potentially, do we have the ability to modify that article before we post the warrant? And I'm just thinking that you would have to probably add a category to transfer to and then reduce other possible options in there. You know, things like OPEB stabilization fund by the amount of $262,831.40 just to compensate for it. Is that an option that we would consider doing? And can we do that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to mention that the entire transfer is $280,172.22. We already paid, that was the total in the Cranberry Village enterprise fund when it closed. The $262 is the amount that we paid to the Cranberry Village Association already. But the total amount of the transfer back to the stabilization fund would be the $280 because we are in the process of cutting them a check of $17,000. So that total adds up to $280,172.22.
Mr. Jack, and I, through you, thank you. So last year, a town meeting, a certain amount was taken out of stabilization for the purpose of paying the residents of Cranberry Village, right? So what was that number?
The number that was moved from stabilization was $262,831.40. There was a balance of $17,338.82 that they hadn't paid and then didn't transfer at the time because they didn't know what that amount was going to be for the, that final invoice. So if the transfer were to occur, I would do the $280 because we're cutting a check next week to the Cranberry Village for that balance.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, but that 17 and change can't come from stabilization at this point because the stabilization fund article was only for the $262,831.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. You have the $262. I mean, we would have to talk about that additional $17,000 because that $17,000 was part of the Cranberry. If the intent, and I'd have to look back at the articles, the original article, closing the enterprise fund, I believe stated that the entire proceeds of that enterprise fund should have been paid out to Cranberry Village. So yes, the transfer back to the stabilization fund would be the $262, and then we'd have to talk about how we're going to fund that additional 17 because that $17,000 was the balance in the enterprise fund that hadn't been paid out yet.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Hope I'm not confusing people.
So, yeah, so my understanding, I guess, was that we were going to have an article on this town meeting to take the additional 17 and change out of free cash and pay it to Cranberry Village, and then take the $262 out of free cash and put it back into the enterprise fund. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the Assistant Town Administrator, we had that on here at one point, didn't we?
Okay, so the options right now, and help me out, and that is, first of all, do we have the option, we could change, they're changing budgets, right, as we had talked. We have the capital, capital outlay is going to go on capital tomorrow. Nothing's been determined yet. There's $1.2 million sitting there. Worst case, if we had to take the $262,000 out of capital, that could happen, correct?
That's correct. My, so some of the options would be to, we have a free cash article that has been voted by the Select Board. That article of money of where we're going to be doing transfers could be reduced by the $280, you know, the $262 that will go back into stabilization, and we would have 17 that will be funded through free cash to cover the balance owed to the Cranberry Association. Or you could reduce a portion of the money that's going to be available to cover capital projects.
Okay. Is there also an option, and I throw this out there, is that could this be put on next year's free cash agenda to take a reduction a year later than it should be to fund it out of free cash and to the stabilization fund?
Yes, that can be done. And once our free cash has been certified for FY '24, we can come back to the Select Board to town meeting and vote to move a portion of that free cash to replenish the stabilization fund and to cover that $17,000. But that is an option that you can absolutely do.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, there's two parts to this, right? There's the 17 and change that has to go to Cranberry Village, and then there's the $262 that has to go back to stabilization. From a legal perspective, there's no issue with waiting to do the transfer to stabilization. However, you know, we do have a contractual agreement with Cranberry Village that we were going to pay them the full amount that was in the, the enterprise fund when it closed out. We just didn't know what that was at the time. And so, you know, my recommendation would be to include something on this warrant that pays them the 17 and change, and then if you want to, you can wait on the $262 to put that back into stabilization at a later time.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend.
Through you, to the Town Administrator, or perhaps the Assistant Town Administrator. You mentioned earlier that there was an article on this warrant to repay Cranberry Village. What happened to that article?
Can I defer to you, Karen? Because I hear you said the check was going out this week.
So, through you, through you, Mr. Chair, the $17,338.82 at the time last year was put into an interest-bearing account. Those funds, we have them, and we were going to be paying Cranberry Village the balance that we owed to them. But as you're mentioning now, that would, you know, if there needs to be a vote, that then the, you know, we were looking to fund that through free cash, then that would need to be reduced in our free cash allocations to cover that. I was not aware of that at the time.
So are we paying Cranberry Village back the money we owe them, just not through an article?
Yes, that's the money that we owe them through the article of when the Cranberry Village enterprise was closed. It's just we had outstanding invoices at the time that hadn't been processed. It was a balance in the account. So we paid them $262, and the balance of the $17,000 hadn't been paid at the time.
So maybe I'm a little mixed up. I hear Mr. Corbo saying we needed a town meeting article to repay Cranberry Village. I hear you saying we're just going to write Cranberry Village a check. And my concern is Cranberry Village gets paid the money we owe Cranberry Village.
I thought I heard Ms. Prevail say we do have to add the $17,000 to the article to transfer. Were you saying we do have to add that to the free cash transfer?
So, so for the Cranberry Village, from the original article, when the, and I believe this was last year, when they closed the enterprise, and I believe there, within the warrant, it stated that we had to pay the entire amount of the balance in the enterprise fund to Cranberry Village at that time. And since we only paid $262, then that would make sense, you know, using stabilization funds, and that would make sense since the Cranberry Village enterprise fund money rolled up into the general fund free cash that we would need to include that $17,000, plus the interest this year in the warrant, and that would have to come from free cash.
We do need to modify that.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to complicate this even further, but I'm looking at the minutes from last year's town meeting, and while the warrant article was to close out said fund by appropriating the remaining, remaining fund balance for the purpose of reimbursing the residents, the motion said, I move to approve Article 6 and to transfer a sum equal to the remaining balance, $275,210.59, from, and ultimately, it was, oh no, I'm sorry, transfer the sum of $262,831.40 from the town stabilization for the purpose of reimbursing the residents of Cranberry Village. So it appears to me that the only appropriation that was made was for the $262, and that if there's going to be a further payment to Cranberry Village, there would need to be an article on this year's warrant taking out of free cash the additional $17,000.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I agree with that statement only because the enterprise money, the entire $280, went into the general fund.
So that's the question.
If the enterprise money hadn't been moved into the general fund, which rolled up into the free cash number, then we would have just used the money in the Cranberry enterprise fund money, and that would have replenished the stabilization fund. But because that is not what occurred in terms of the accounting, then the proper procedure would be to have an article this year, which include the $17,338.82 plus whatever interest was earned during the time it was in an interest-bearing account. It's not, there's, there's not that, it's still around $17,000. I just don't, I don't have the exact number. I can get back to you on that exact figure.
Okay, so we've established we need to put a war, an item on the warrant for this. But what about the $262,000 that's still sitting out there?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that, as I mentioned before, can either be a reduction in what you're already allocating in free cash to existing projects within the operating budget, or it could be a reduction in the free cash available funds that we're using to cover the capital projects.
Okay, so to our Town Administrator, Mr. Gannon, now, how would that work? Should we put, sit down, put together a warrant article to be added? I know we're meeting on Thursday, and the theory was we were going to finish the warrant and vote on capital. But would that be something with schedule a meeting next week on to resolve this issue?
I think we would need to, because we'd need to post another Select Board meeting and vote on that article.
Okay.
And I would recommend delaying the $262 into the stabilization until, until the fall town meeting, having it come out of, fiscal year '25 free cash, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'd recommend just delaying that.
Okay.
To make sure that happens at our next town meeting, whether that be a fall or...
So is, should we look at tabling this item, rescinding the vote that was on the, on the agenda for tonight until we have a plan for the 17?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Or vote, or you could vote on the 17. We know we have to do that at least. You could, we could take a motion. We don't have the exact figure, but we could maybe take a motion to take that figure with interest and, and put it on the warrant. It could be part of Article 2, I think, already. Is that possible? Because it already has money being transferred into free cash. You would just have to add an item to that that covers this account.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend.
I just think whether we amend the free cash this year or postpone it to a fall or if there's no fall or spring town meeting, I think there needs to be a commitment on the part of this board that we repay the stabilization money, the stabilization fund that money, because that was clear at town meeting when we did this last year. We clearly, it was a last minute issue, and we had to find some funds to pay back Cranberry Village, but the commitment was clear at a town meeting that we were going to pay back the stabilization fund. And the commitment was clear that we were going to do it at this town meeting.
I agree.
Now, if we're so far into the budget, that's a little too late. And personally, my recommendation would be, before we vote on this, that we ask the Town Administrator to go back and look at available funds and see if he can find that money. And if he can, we schedule an additional meeting and vote on that. But if, if that's not the case, I think there needs to be a commitment on the part of this board that the next town meeting, whenever that is, whether it's the fall or the spring, that we repay that money to the stabilization fund. What we told town meeting was clear, that we were going to pay that.
Sure. It was clear. Yep, I agree. All right, so I guess we don't need to vote on this article unless a member of the board would like to make that motion to add the payment for $17,000 as a warrant article if we have the correct total?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, I can provide the total amount of the balance owed to Cranberry Village, which includes the interest. And, you know, in terms of the capital budget, I believe we still have, you know, a little balance in the free cash to cover that, but I'll go through those numbers.
Okay, then we'll go back to us on that.
Yes.
Okay. So through you, Mr. Chair, so one way to deal with this then would be to take Article 2, and it says to see if the town will vote to appropriate A23,440, increase that by the 17 and change, and then add an Item J, payment to Cranberry Village for that same amount.
Sure.
Through, Mr. Chair, if I can just mention something, you know, in terms of the capital projects, you know, so that we don't have to reduce it, there's an option, you know, as we mentioned at the last meeting, there were balances in the capital projects, there's more than 200 plus.
254,000, I think.
Yes, available in the balance of the capital projects that have been completed or they're not being used. So it could be an option that you could use some of the money for those balances to cover capital projects and then free up some of the free cash to cover a portion of the money that we need to replenish the stabilization. I can run those numbers tomorrow morning, and I can send an email showing what that would look like. And, you know, I had some updates for the Capital Committee in terms of the 700 that we discussed the other week. So I have good news, so I'm not coming with any bad news, but I do have an update to the Capital Committee to discuss that.
All right, so why don't we plan on holding off on this vote? You're going to get us new numbers, and hopefully we'll have another meeting, and we'll be able to, I'm hoping to fund that commitment that we made this year.
Yeah, I can say I'm pretty sure I'll be to fund the money to be to fund that.
Great. Any other questions? Board? Nope. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, a little behind, but we've got now the 610, the continuation of the Eversource Public Hearing. Is there anybody here from Eversource that would like to come to the table? And just give your names to the record, please.
Sure. So, good evening, Philip Burke, Eversource Community Relations, cover Cape, Vineyard, Carver, Plymouth.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So Philip Burke, Community Relations with Eversource, I cover Cape Cod, the Vineyard, Carver, and Plymouth.
And face weapon from Eversource in Plymouth.
Great. Thank you both for coming. I think we'd requested a engineer to be here tonight. Is that, no one's coming?
You do not have an engineer? No. So I reached out to the engineering team with all the questions. My hope is I can answer as many of them as possible, but I think the, the engineering team really wanted to make it pretty clear that the issue at hand is an issue between the town and the applicant, not, not the company, in the sense of, we just put together whatever's asked for by, by the applicant. So a work order request comes in from an applicant, whatever that is, the engineers draw it up. So I, they, they did provide me with a lot of information, so I think I'll probably be able to answer most of the questions. But they didn't want to set a precedent of every time that there's a question between an applicant and a municipality that the engineering team comes out, because it's all essentially based on the request of the applicant.
Mr. Sherman? Through you, to the Town Administrator, did we have advance notice from Eversource that they weren't going to send an engineering team here?
We have been trying to encourage them to have an engineer come to us. They have told us before that the engineer was not available. We were hoping that they would still bring...
But, but did they say anything about this particular meeting, that an engineering team was not coming?
I believe they did tell us an engineer was not coming.
Okay. I just think we have a lot of residents here, and at the last meeting, it was clear on behalf of the board that I think we wanted someone that could speak to the engineering here. And I just think it's a little disrespectful to, to the board and to the residents that we couldn't get that here. So it would have been nice if we, we could have got that from Eversource.
And I honestly don't think the intent was disrespect. I think it's that, my understanding was they really didn't want to get into, again, A, setting a precedent that any time that there's an issue, because these, there's literally thousands of these cases, that any time there was an issue between a municipality and an applicant with respect to whether it was going to be overhead or underground utilities or anything like that, that that's something that has to get flushed out between the applicant and the town, that their, their take on it is essentially, the, the request comes in from the applicant, whatever that is, they engineer it and then, and then come back. So I think if we want to get into the respect of the questions that run, I think I can answer several of them, but ultimately, I don't think it was a matter of disrespect as if that's just not what they do.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I just, I don't think any precedence is being set. I've been... I've been on the board for six years, a little over six years. I've been through a number of poll hearings. I don't remember one with these particular circumstances. So this is sort of an unusual case. So I, I can understand you're not wanting to set precedent or have them come all the time, but like I said, I've been on the board for a little over six years. This is the only one that I recall like this. So I think in this case, it, it, I would have appreciated personally having someone that could speak to that directly from the engineering team.
The plan would not have been to bring a, an engineer to every single poll there.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Ryan?
So I think the main question is, in, in, with respect to the engineering, is that I've been down the road a couple of times and, so you're, you're saying that if you were asked to put them underground, it's easy, they can do it. It's, it's...
So, so, yes, so here's what I was told about that.
Okay.
So what I was told is underground utilities are certainly possible in that location, because there are underground utilities in the area. However, the underground utilities are privately owned. They are not owned by Eversource. So if the applicant, or if the town and/or the applicant decided that they wanted to go down the road of underground utilities for that location, the owner of those utilities would have to agree to that process.
Okay.
And it's unknown essentially what is in the ground there from Eversource's perspective as to whether it could, how much engineering, like, whether that equipment would have to necessarily be upgraded to support the rest of that. That would, essentially, when they dig up the ground, they'd look and they'd be able to tell you, oh, perfect, we can do exactly what we need to do, or no, hey, this isn't quite good enough, we're actually going to have to upgrade this as well. But ultimately, before they can put any shovels in the ground, they would have to get agreement from the owners of those utilities. So whether that's the folks who live at eighteen Indian Street or the folks who live on Alexandra Drive or Alexandra, whatever it is, they own those things. Eversource does not. So if the applicant were to come before the town and say, hey, we're proposing underground utilities for this location, Eversource would say, okay, go get the agreement and we will engineer plans. And then they would come back with plans and how to do it. My sense is, having walked that location, that that probably would require quite a bit of work, just having, you know, gone down that stretch there. I sense you'd probably end up with some trees being taken down. I think that that's probably a given and/or that road being cut up pretty significantly to make that happen. But it is doable in the sense that underground utilities are there, they're present, so they can do that. But what they engineered was above, was overhead, because that is what the applicant came to Eversource with. The applicant simply came with an overhead request, so the engineers take the request and engineer it, so.
She wants...
Thank you. My recollection, when Alexandra Lane was built, is that, since I was on the planning board at the time, that was a conservation subdivision. And the reason the utilities are underground there is because we could ask them to do, we could ask you to do that. And that extended not just to the residents of Alexandra Lane, but to three or four houses down on Indian Street, on the northern side of Indian Street. And so it surprises me that you would say you'd have to dig things up. I'm sure you have engineered plans from when Alexandra Lane was initiated, and those houses were, the four May houses, which were part of that subdivision, were put in. I believe it was two thousand and two.
No, I mean, they would have to dig things up in order to access them initially.
Oh, but what you said was to, to find out whether they could do it.
Well, no, in the sense of to know exactly what, they don't own, Eversource doesn't own those utilities that are in the ground there.
But you did engineer them at the time.
That's very possible, yeah.
Well, you had to have to put them in.
What I'm saying is, they don't know the shape, they don't know the condition that they're in, we don't maintain them. There's, we don't, we have no ownership of those. So they, it could, they could, they could look on an old plan and say, here's what we think is here. They could open it up, it could be exact, it could be perfect, you know? But it's also been underground for a period of time, there's, you know, I don't, they just, they're not going to speculate. So they're not going to say that, yes, if they're a hundred percent certain that they could go there, dig it up, and go, it's very probable that they could. They could potentially look at an old plan and, and know exactly what's, you know, have a, a sense of what was in there, but again, it's just that they, they can't guarantee it.
Questions?
Sure.
Mr. Ryan?
Who owns the utilities and who services? So if, I guess the residents get charged a bill from another company, not Eversource, who's, who's the supplier of the, and, and who owns the utilities? It seems like there's a third party involved here?
Privately owned wires are very common in subdevelopments and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, like, I actually had that case in, in my development. I lost power one time and thought that Eversource could come out and Eversource couldn't just come to my property and start digging, because they didn't own, they can, they can fix the problem, but they need permission to actually do that. So homeowner associations, things like that, will actually own, and what they'll do is they'll bring in a contractor to go ahead and, and lay that equipment and then, you know, it's permitted properly, I'm sure, but, and then Eversource can, you know, quote unquote, like, turn on, you know, turn the switch on and make the, the power go through. But we don't own that, that equipment. We own the, in cases, some cases we do, but in that particular case, we do not.
And do we know who, through the chair, do we know who owns it?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, so how difficult would that be to contact the residents who live on Alexandra Lane and the three or four houses on Indian Street that were foremade for underground utilities?
How difficult what?
How difficult would it be to contact them on your part?
I mean, I don't know. We don't, I don't think it would be difficult, but I don't, again, we're like, so are...
I mean, you said to get permission.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be getting the permission. It would be the applicant getting the permission and then, like, essentially proving that they had, it's like an easement in a way. It's like, it's like proving that they have access to that. So we wouldn't be going and getting that. Again, it would be that the applicant has come to Eversource and said, we want to go with underground utilities, and then we would look and they'd say, okay, they're, they're private, you need to get permission from whoever it is and come back to us when you have that permission, whatever that written document looks like, and then we would go forward with it. We wouldn't do that, that reach out in that particular, in this particular case. Again, if we owned them, it would be a different situation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gannon?
Good. Just to go back to the executive, do we, do we know who owns them?
I don't know. I don't. I haven't, I haven't looked. I, I don't know who does. I assume a home, like a homeowner's association or something to that effect, but I don't know. And I, I think, again, I'm not a hundred percent certain on this, but I believe that that first home, that's eighteen, is underground utilities there. I'm assuming that when that was put in, that they paid to have that done for their home. That's my assumption on that. I don't know. And that they actually own those underground utilities leading up to that house. Because if you were coming down Indian Street, it's the first, sort of the first new one, I would say, new, on the left, it's eighteen, is underground there. And so there, there is conceivably a hookup there, but they own that. So Eversource can't just go onto their property and start digging and taking their, there's a, it's theirs, you know?
So, so, Mr. Chair, so who owns the utilities that are on the poles?
In almost all cases, Eversource does.
So I'm confused why they don't own the ones that are underground.
It's just, it's just a way it goes. Sometimes, when, when developments are done independently, they can lay that, that equipment down. Eversource just generally will stay with overhead. And we do own some underground utilities, but it's just...
So do you know for sure that these particular ones that are underground are, are privately owned?
It's only what I've been told. It's only what I've been told. I, I don't, I don't know, from, from Eversource.
By your engineer?
Yeah, yeah.
I see. To the best of my knowledge, that's, that was not a homeowner's association, so.
And it could have been an independent contractor, whoever built that development may have subcontracted that out to somebody. I don't know. But I don't think, I don't think our engineers would, would have that answer, even eventually, somebody, I'm sure, could dig up the, the ownership of that.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Chair, when, when you say the applicant would request permission, do you mean the developer?
Yes.
The builder? Because the person that requested the poll hearing is Eversource.
Yeah.
So I, I...
So that's, that's, that's on behalf of the applicant, once the applicant makes the, the ask. So, so if the applicant had come before the town and said, I want to do underground utilities, we would still show up here and go through this process. It's just that what is engineered for the applicant is based on the applicant's ask. So we still come before and, and go through the procedural process of asking for their rights and all of those things that has, that has to be done legally. However, it, it, it's independent sort of of whether it's wires above or in the ground.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
If I may, I have a question, since we have our legal counsel here. What, I'm not sure exactly what we're supposed to do, because this is a poll hearing to locate poles. And we, we've had residents here with a lot of questions that I'm not sure are being answered. And it is a public hearing, so they have a right to, to speak. But I'm not, I guess, I'm not exactly sure what we are required or allowed to do in this case.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, so under the Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-six, Section twenty-one, at the poll hearing, the inquiry for the select board, or I should say, the standard that the company is subject to is that the, in installing the polls, piers, abutments, conduits, and other fixtures, which may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of its lines, but such company shall not incomode the public use of public ways or endanger or interrupt navigation. Now, incomode is not a term that is frequently used anymore, and I had to look it up. It means inconvenience. So, you know, it appears from this, this language that, you know, you're looking at, you know, are, is, are the placement of the poles and the wires going to somehow interfere with travel on the way? Now, there is case law from the nineteen sixties that suggests that your inquiry is broader than that and that you do have jurisdiction of, over broader public safety and welfare concerns. But the, at the end of the day, right, your decision has to be able to withstand scrutiny, which means that it cannot be arbitrary and capricious. It has to be based on some evidence or reasoning as to why you are denying a particular application.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I believe there were some other questions that came up. I'm not sure, do we, through the TA or the assistant TA, do we have a list of the other questions? I think some had to do with six poles for four homes. It's going from like eighteen to twenty-eight, and then there was a question of coming from either the east, west, or south, or some way to try to reduce the number of poles and, and things of that nature.
With respect to that, I, I did bring that up with the engineers, whether there was a way to go, whether they thought that there was a way to engineer a fewer number of poles. That was essentially the question, and then there was something about the distance between the poles. What I was told was the sort of standard is a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty feet, that the number that they have in that location is the fewest they could possibly come up with and that actually one of the lengths is up to a hundred and seventy feet, so they're already over what they would recommend doing on that location. So you, you, I mean, conceivably, I think you probably could go with a lower number of poles, but that probably means they're bigger, larger, heavier duty things. But I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm not going to speak to that, but that would be my, my guess on that. But based on average procedure and standard, one twenty to one fifty, and, and that number was what came up with for that location, so there was no way to come up with a, a lower one. But again, it didn't factor in. The application wasn't for, like, a combination of underground and overhead, for example. That wasn't what the application came in as. So if the applicant had come forward and said, hey, we want to do, we want to, you know, work with the, the community and, and have a half underground, half above ground, Eversource could engineer that. Again, they would need that permission, that's clear, but that's a possibility. And so you could potentially engineer that with a, a different setup, but it, again, it comes from what the ask is. That's how that's designed.
Mr. Chair?
She wants...
If I may, once again, I noticed that one of the residents, Mr. Schindler, came and he was unable to be here earlier. So I wanted to make it very clear, for his benefit in particular, that we had discussed that this original conservation subdivision included three or four houses on Indian Street, on the northern side of Indian Street, where we, as a, the planning board required them to put the, the lines underground. So that's why those lines are underground and other houses are not underground. And we've been told tonight that the Eversource does not own those utilities. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. So this still is a continuation of a public hearing. I did not know if the builders, I believe, are here, if they would like to comment on the option of underground versus overhead. And then I think maybe if there was a resident that wasn't here last time that wanted to ask a question, I think we should allow that.
I just want to give you guys these bunches of pitches that you can take a check yet. I know you all have been there, I'm sure, but...
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
You guys can share, it's running out. And I got a new one, because I forgot everything. Thank you. Okay, Mike Mulligan, Absolute Building Consultants, I own number twenty and number twenty-six. I went down Indian Street and measured today. One of the questions from our last meeting, I believe, Mr. Ryan, was why can't we put some poles in from one end of Indian Street and then the other? So from twenty-eight Indian Street to twenty-six Indian Street, it's five hundred and thirty-five feet between those two. So there's going to be no poles in that five hundred and thirty-five feet. Starting at eighteen, now I know you guys were talking about eighteen was part of that subdivision. It's not. Eighteen was a new house and they just went underground and up the pole that was already existing there on the corner of their lot. So eighteen isn't part of that old subdivision.
Can I ask a quick question, though? But when eighteen did that, they would have went and got permission? Are you saying they hooked to the underground lines and then brought it under and went up the pole?
They didn't go to underground lines, sir. They went to a telephone pole with a transformer that's on the corner of their lot. So that's, that's the next to the last lot on Indian Street. There's that one on the corner of theirs, and then there's one kind of at an angle across, which basically a hundred feet from my lot line, so I could put a five, a pole on twenty and just go overhead right there anyways, right?
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, so I did not say eighteen was part of the original conservation subdivision.
A couple, a couple people said...
It was the houses on the...
I think it was actually the, him, the Eversource guy, said that it was eighteen, yeah.
It was the houses on the northern side of Indian Street.
Correct, exactly. That's why I was mentioning it, because he had, he had mentioned that. Let me see. It is my understanding that the scenic road rule is that it's about not cutting down any trees that if, all right, so back to the other one, I'm sorry, I get distracted. So from eighteen to twenty-six is a distance of nine hundred and twenty feet. Within that nine hundred and twenty feet is the four houses that we need to hit. So that's what was designed for those poles. It is my understanding that the scenic road rule is that it's about the cutting down of trees and affecting rock walls. Counsel, is that right?
That's correct.
During the call, if you can answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that is correct.
Thanks.
Yes.
The way that the poles have been designed, they were designed, there are no trees that need to be cut down. Okay, so that's why the poles are where they are. Let me see, if it was to go underground, now, now, back to the thing about the subdivisions. I build subdivisions and what happens is, is I hire a company called Underground Utilities. Underground Utilities, I pay them to design, they work with Eversource, and they design an underground system for a neighborhood. When I do it, I do a system that's strong enough to encompass all the houses in the subdivision, and that's all I'm doing, because I'm not going to pay a lot more money to do that. And what happens with those utilities that are underground, they are basically owned by the subdivision. So the wire is bought by me, the pipe is bought by me, the structures that go underground are bought by me. Eversource supplies the transformers that attach this all together. So as he was saying in his neighborhood, he was hoping Eversource was going to come and fix it with a bolt. No, they didn't. That is going to be part of whoever it was that designed and owned that subdivision. He probably, you say that there wasn't a, I have no idea, but you said you thought that there wasn't an association. If there was a problem...
I, I don't believe so, no.
All right, so if there was a problem, the association would be responsible for what goes on with those pipes, structures, and wires. All right, so that's that part of it. So, so I don't trust, now, he kept saying it's on the applicant. All we did was pick up the phone and said, we're building houses, we need power out there, can you have your engineer meet us? The engineer did it on his own. He did it backwards. We went... We went back to Eversource and said it's wrong. This has been over a year we put the lots under agreement. When we put the lots under agreement, we instantly called Eversource and started working with them to make sure that we have power when we're ready to, for the house. This has been over a year. These houses are sold to these people. So, he could say it's the applicant, that's okay, but we didn't say overhead, underground. We said we need power. They said it's a scenic road. They went to the town manager that retired. I went to the town manager that, I guess, retired. He said you could have put, put in poles because you're going to destroy the road if you do underground, right? So now we'll continue. If we would go underground services to the houses, we would have to cut down several trees. The next issue with the underground, that we would have to mow underneath the roads. To do that, we would need to dig up ten to fifteen feet beyond the edge of the tire, which would put us in people's front yards. So that would be out of the road layout. We would need permission from homeowners. The next issue was cutting down trees in underground, for the underground, is very close to the edge of the road. Most of the trees that you see out there are big, beautiful pines, and as you know, pine trees have a shallow, wide root system, so when we go to rip the sumps out of the ground, you're going to rip up the road. They're right, you know? Again, the customers are hoping that they can get into their houses soon.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Nope. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Were there any other homeowners that weren't allowed to, weren't at last meeting that wanted to speak? Feel free to come up. Please state your name and address.
So, Kirk Mossman, nineteen Indian Street. So, when I, I didn't know I owned those, that wire. Eversource, thank you. And thank you, town, for screwing me, because now apparently I have to pay a bill if something goes wrong with it. I would like, I would, I do give permission for you to go underground and cut down the trees, because trees don't matter, is what you said before.
Who said trees don't matter?
But I prefer, I prefer the underground service. I had to wait for the underground service to go in, is my, is my thing. So, I, I waited for a long period of time, and Sarah knows this because she was part of the commission that required it. I don't think that the rules should change because some new builder comes in and doesn't want to pay for it. I think we should just basically be able to put the underground power across the street, whatever he needs to do, to get it done. And you can come up from the other end, but there's no engineer, obviously, from Eversource that wants to show up because they don't want to pay the money to do that, right? They prefer to put a pole on. I would rather not have a pole on my lot, or going across the street, right? Because I have kids, he's going to go outside and play, I like the fact that there's underground service. If a wire comes down, he could get electrocuted. Happened in my town, right? So I prefer, really, just for safety, underground services, is what I would rather. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy there. John Fink, representing Stephen Mercer, I'm attorney at Sims and Sims, at seventeen Indian Lane. Should be more than enough. So I had a few issues that I wanted to raise on behalf of Mr. Mercer on this one. I'm not sure that we're going to get satisfactory answers, given the turnout on Eversource's end. First, I'll address the scenic road, it's, it's in the title, obviously. Scenic is all about the view. And the Conservation Commission had made this, the planning board had made this into a conservation area. If you look at the second item in your handout, the first is obviously a map. That area that's darker is owned by the Conservation Commission. It was part of the original plan for this development. Mr. Mercer is at seventeen Indian Street. You see it highlighted there on the map. It immediately abuts there. If you look at the plan for the pole placement, they're intending to place not only a pole directly in front of Mr. Mercer's home, but one in front of that public access area for the Conservation Commission land. The entire purpose of this subdivision was to get around the rules associated with how lots are laid out, and that was obviously back in two thousand and two. And if you look at what the findings were by the Carver Planning Board and its decision, it was making that exceptional grant through special permit largely in consideration for the grant of this open space that would be available for the town moving forward. And it specifically lays out, much shorter than your actual bylaws, which I've included here as well related to that portion, kind of the requirements. Essentially, the purpose is to create open space, recreational use, good views, that kind of a thing. It outlines it in a few other places, but if you take a look at, say, nine, ten, and eleven, page three of that decision, what you see is it's laying out in short, plain words your actual bylaws on it, that it's supposed to remain unbuilt. It provides for underground utilities, but there's no mention in your bylaw on conservation of above-ground utilities. It specifically says that you can place underground utilities in that open space area, but it's, it doesn't explicitly say, and don't shove a utility pole there. But I do believe it is fairly clear in Section 3863 that there's nothing authorizing that open space. It specifically prohibits anything to be built that isn't required to be built. It's intended to be open, and that's what the purpose of this was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you, could you, as applicant, could you please, not applicant, but petitioner, would you just repeat what you said a little more slowly?
Sure. The purpose of this open area and this space, tell you what, we'll go into the actual bylaws. The third item I have here in your handout, the first page shows you that it is the Towne Carver Zone and Bylaw, and then we go into the entire conservation subdivision design, that's three thousand eight hundred, and the zoning bylaw numbers. I'm highlighting for the board's attention, 3862, indicating that the required open space shall remain unbuilt upon. If you look at the, the plan submitted for this utility pole, it places it immediately in front of that access, right next to Mr. Mercer's property. I'm also highlighting for you 3863, which specifically authorizes underground utilities in that open area. I submit that reading this would indicate that a utility pole would not be allowed. And 3865 requires that the land be kept in a perpetually open space. Obviously, the intention here is that there's going to be space provided for the residents of Carver that's available, and that was the, the reason for the conservation subdivision in the first place. And if you look at 3870 down there at the bottom, it gets into a buffer area, minimum of fifty feet, but it indicates that it shall be retained by the natural vegetative state to the extent most feasible, and then in accordance with General Law, Section 140. When this division went in, the planning board required that all of these utility, utilities be placed underground. All these homeowners paid that cost in some way or another. This new developer is attempting to get permission to put in those same lines that could have been done twenty years ago, that the planning board found would not warrant this subdivision, right? The appearance of these poles would somehow have an impact on either the scenic nature of a scenic road, or be it otherwise in violation of your zoning bylaws prohibiting anything built up in the conservation land, in the open area of this conservation subdivision. So that was the finding years ago. All of these homeowners paid for it in some way or another, and now they're attempting, now a new developer is trying to sidestep that. Now, I'm not saying they can't have power, but without the engineers here to tell you that there's no way around it, I don't see where it makes sense to authorize that utility pole right in front of the open area that was explicitly reserved to have nothing built on it. Now, the other thing I will note is that the only easement reference that we are able to locate for Eversource or anything else, and it is probably because it is the privately-owned utilities, is that these are not general grants of an easement. I'm not able to find a grant of an easement in this particular subdivision. What I'm able to do is locate the actual board, which has very specific lots enumerated as to who's allowed that utility easement. There does not appear to be a general grant of easement. I looked for it, Attorney Sims at my office looked for it. We didn't get the chance to do a full title rundown on it, but it doesn't appear to have been recorded, so that this is a very specific grant of easement, not a general one.
Attorney Corbo, do you have any response, or do you need time to review?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, the relevance of this isn't entirely clear to me. I don't believe that the public way is part of open space connected to a subdivision, nor do I think that there is a zoning issue here, but if there was, you know, that would be something that, you know, would be for the ZBA, the building inspector, the planning board, not this board. And, and certainly, if this board were to grant permission to install the poles in these locations, it would be incumbent upon the applicant to comply with all other applicable laws. And if it was found that these poles were not allowed under zoning, then the poles wouldn't be allowed despite whatever approval that you've given. So I, I mean, I think the, the import of, of what's being argued here is that there is some aesthetic objection to having these poles along the way. And I think it's up for you as a board to decide, you know, is that a sufficient basis for denying this application? Or, you know, do you believe that installing the lines in this location to provide power to these other homes satisfies the criteria in the statute that this will not, quote-unquote, incommode public convenience?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. She wants?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Corbo. So, I, I hear what the gentleman's attorney is saying, but my question to you is, does the select board actually have any authority to tell them they have to be underground the way in two thousand and two the planning board could make that part of a special permit? Do we have any kind of authority to do that?
In my opinion, no, you do not. You know, you can, you can grant this location, or you can deny this location, but you don't have the authority to dictate the means and methods by which they supply this subdivision with electricity. If you deny it, you know, they can, you can deny it and say, come back to us with underground, or, I felt the last time I heard some discussions about putting them on the other side of the street, you know, again, you can't make them do that, but you know, you can sort of say, well, we're going to deny it based on this configuration, but if you moved it to the other side of the street, we might be more inclined to, to grant it, something like that. But no, you cannot, in my opinion, dictate the means and methods by which they, they do this work.
Well, as far as incommoding goes, if you take a look at the proposed placement, this right here is the conservation area that would tend to inconvenience public access or view of that general area.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
So, is the challenge just the one of the, one of the poles? If, in other words, if they worked around it, is it, or is it all of the poles?
No, I think that one is particularly notable, right?
Okay.
If you wanted to send them back for a replacement where it's not quite there, that would also make sense, and maybe that would be a different discussion, but they're placing one directly in front of the open space that was specifically set by a special permit to be entirely open. And these lots were required to have underground utilities by that planning board, specifically to avoid utility poles in that area.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So, that is, I know it's in a kind of state of disrepair, but that open space is Indian Brook Conservation Land with Camden Trail.
It was owned by the Towne Carver, yes.
Correct. And there's a parking, that open area that you're talking about is theoretically for two cars to park. Is that the area we're talking about?
One right next to your house? Right.
And, okay. So I guess the question to Eversource would be, is there any, any way that Eversource could place the pole on the lot line instead of right in front of the parking area for the open space? That, that would be a question directed to Eversource.
Is that something that Eversource has the answer for now, or?
Yeah, I don't know, it's one of you guys' thoughts, so...
Could you use a microphone for me?
Do you have an extra mic?
So I think, again, it comes back to if...
If a, a request was sent in to Eversource to do that specific thing, that's, that's what the engineers would attempt to do, and then they would come back...
Just to relocate the pole?
Yeah. So if, if, if a new request was put in, so essentially, well, but it has to be understood, though, that when that request goes in, so it goes in as like, I hate to get into like their terminology, but it's like a new work order, so it's basically like starting the process from scratch. This particular location, I think, has had like thirteen of these. And so it, you could, it could go in with a request to try that, and it's just like going in with a request to try underground and above ground at the same time. Like, they will make the attempt to do these things, but they can't, it comes from...
I'm sorry, I think maybe you misunderstood me. I'm not talking about doing it on thirteen different lots. I was speaking specifically about that open space lot. Could it be shifted to the lot line instead of right in the middle of that parcel?
My assumption would be that they would have to engineer the entire thing. So they wouldn't just shift one, I think they'd probably, but again, I'm, that, like, they, it would, it would, so what would happen is, the applicant would make a request for that particular thing that you're describing, right? And then engineers would, would engineer it. They would take a look and say, yes, this is physically possible, no, it's not, mathematically it doesn't work, or whatever. But, and this is, I think, is why they didn't want to come here and do this, is because they didn't want to get into a back and forth about theoreticals about what they could or could not do without actually going, you know, being at their computer essentially and engineering the actual diagram. So I didn't, I think they don't want to get into where it can and cannot go. They would make a, if a request came in to try and do it that way, they would go back to the, quote-unquote, drawing board, essentially, start over and try and engineer it that way.
To move one pole? To move one pole?
To that, yes. But it may impact all of them. I, I don't know. And I think that they would say they don't know until they look and, and do it, I think is the answer to that.
And if you're going to bump that one back, obviously, my client would like that one bumped over to the edge of the property as well, if we're going to move them twenty feet. I think by preference, we would prefer underground or across the street, but if you're going to bump them back twenty feet, that would be a third alternative here. Without Eversource taking kind of some ownership of where they go, it's hard to reach a resolution that's negotiated.
Understood.
Thank you.
I think, um, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If Eversource would like to make a comment?
The reason, if we move that one pole, then we have to re-engineer the whole design because it's for the slack in the wires. So you don't want to put too much space between the wires, because now if there's a storm, an ice storm or snowstorm, the wires get heavy. So you don't want to put that much space between them. So that's why we can't just say we can move that one pole. We'd have to go and redesign the whole thing, if that's a better explanation.
Look at the load on the wires.
Right. We don't want to make the, the wires too heavy. And then we don't want to spread them out, and then, instead of six poles, now we need ten poles. Because if we can't get the six, we know we're not going to get the ten.
Understood.
It's unfortunate that that wasn't thought of to start with.
In the beginning, yes. I think, one more comment, I think we had one of the builders that...
Good evening. Bob Goslin, I'm building the house at twenty-two. I just want you to know that we come, as four, there's three builders there. We're not one developer that came in to do this. They're all Form A lots that we bought. We got building permits for. When we buy, when we buy the lots, we apply to Eversource for ser, for service. Now, we've gone through definitely two, maybe three, I can't remember quite, in the last year, of engineers, because they, one would quit and trying to get them to meet us out there and do certain things, to get, to show us where these things were going and to make sure they were servicing the lots properly. I spoke to Mr. Fennessy at length before this, before, before he left. I spoke to Mr. Bott during this. The fact that it was a scenic road especially, it was determined that by going overhead with these poles was going to be the least disruptive on the street. If you went underground, then the layout, the whole layout's going to be on whatever side it is. You can't go on the other side of the street because the wetlands comes right up to the layout. So you can't go over there, which is on the side of twenty-two. So this was the least amount of disruption that was going to cau... So, this was the least amount of disruption that was going to ca, that it was going to cause for the street. It was only going to be minor tree trimming, and that was the way that we applied for it because that was the way we were directed. Yes, Eversource, but they don't give us an option. We don't say we want to go up underground or overhead. Ninety-nine percent of the time on existing roads, especially scenic roads, it's overhead because you don't want to be destroying all the trees. So, that's the reason why we went the way we went. Now, we've already paid them for this. They wouldn't have even made this appointment without us giving them a check. So, we were already paid for all of this. We're just waiting for this. There's houses over there that are all done, it's a power that people are waiting to get into, and it just, I just would implore, in all due respect, hope the board would understand this and that any other solution that you have, no matter what you look at, is going to be more disruptive to Indian Street. This is the least.
Thank you. Uh, we have two gentlemen been waiting. Do you have new information?
Um, not really, but I did talk about 18 Indian and how that worked out. We built 18 Indian.
I, I, I think, we, I don't think we, sure, okay, sure, go ahead.
You know me, a different role, but I, uh...
Hi, how you doing?
So, we built, I represent Jay McKinnon, we built 18 Indian Street. That particular pole was there in place, and when you put a work order request in with, with Eversource or N-Star or any of these companies, the process gets very confusing. So, we built the house in Kingston, we had three work orders in the same house. What happens when you get a work order is, it goes into a system and it goes through three levels of approval. You've got engineering, you've got design, you've got construction. You keep adding work orders to this particular project, it'll never get finished. And I just know that from my two years of doing this and my 22 years in education. The process can be very slow and difficult. We're the last house being built, we're supposed to be done in June. On 18 Indian Street, we built that house, and he was fortunate that the pole ended at his house, and we paid from the bottom of the pole to the house. So, we dug a huge trench along the road into the house, we paid for the electrician, we paid for the wire, we paid for the process. So, um, listening to this as it plays out, placing a few poles along the street, I know it may not be ideal, is a lot less of a burden than digging up that entire road. I can also tell you that for us in particular, and I know these two gentlemen here that are building, they put work orders in for above ground. If we go to below ground, the process starts over. And it starts over in a big way, meaning several months will pass before we get engineering done, approval done, and everything else. So, again, we're, we're supposed to close in a couple of weeks, about a month. They've been sitting on this property for a real long time. Anybody in the building world knows that when you sit on these properties, it's very expensive. We were told to go over, 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 overhead, we were told there's going to be power there, and, you know, this is the first, we're sitting here, but the process obviously for these poor gentlemen has been much longer. So, I also would say, you know, I think we need to make a decision going back to them for engineering, going back to them, through this process is going to delay this significantly. Not necessarily for you guys, but the N-Star process unfortunately is painful.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right.
I'm at home, Laura.
Sure, yeah, come on home.
Say your name and your address, please.
Andrew Jesse, 25 Indian Street. So, some of you I've written emails to about some of the stuff with the two other homes that have been built a few years back. I'm concerned about what the precedent of this is going to set going down the road for other scenic roads in this town as well. I reached out to Eversource Engineering myself and spoke to somebody. They told me that if everybody agrees on the street, Eversource can take ownership, they just need a document stating that. Also with the utilities, I talked to a troubleshooter, they brought up on the map and showed me that they own everything right up to the handhole on the lots. So, for wherever this goes, and they say they don't know who does it, it was a local contractor that installed this 20 years ago. Talking about the destruction of the property or the land and stuff, I don't see it because 20 years ago they put it in and it was very minimal. Those trees are not 20 years old, probably a lot older. So, I'm just very concerned with what this is going to open up. I'm sorry if it costs more, it's time consuming, I understand that. Planning Board probably should have done a better job laying this out, like in the Town Master Plan, it specifically says on page five dash seven, that underground utilities should be used at all costs or at all instances. It doesn't talk about because it's cheaper or anything like that. So, that's pretty much all.
Thank you. And we have one last person that wanted to speak.
Hello, my name is Amy LaRochelle. I, my husband and I are one of the four families that are waiting to move into our homes. We've been waiting for probably three months now, but I know there's another family here that's been waiting, you know, six months. And we just feel it would be unfair and irresponsible of the board to put it off any longer. We're waiting, you know, waiting to get into our homes, waiting to start the next phase of our lives. We're trying to sign our kids up for school activities, and so, you know, we'd really appreciate it if you guys could make a decision today and, you know, vote to move forward with installing the poles.
Thank you. All right, so I guess the path going forward, I guess it's unclear, we either approve or we do not approve. Could anyone like to make a motion?
We do have a question.
Nope, we have one more question, Mr. Ryan.
Do we need any input from the zoning board or the planning board? I mean, if we were to vote any way that we go, is there still a requirement that it has to be looked at by them, or is that, that off the table because of the...
If I may, Mr. Chair, and I'll defer to Mr. Corbo, but my understanding is that, for better or for worse, at the time, planning board issued a special permit, so that's why they could make that requirement to have underground utilities and that extended to the three or four Form As on the northern side of the street. Mr. Corbo has told us, we don't have the authority as a select board to make that same kind of decision, even if we wanted to. And I feel very badly both for the residents who've been there for 20 years and for the ones who want to move in. Part of me does feel like it would be less destructive ironically to put in the poles. I don't know for sure, not being an engineer, but the main issue, I think, with, with us is that we just don't have the authority to make them do that. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Corbo, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, as, as I said earlier, you know, you're not in the same position as, as the planning board when it comes to granting subdivision approval. You know, you're solely in charge of, you know, the location of the poles. And again, the, the standard is, it's a public safety and welfare standard, and again, you don't get to dictate means and methods. So, again, it really is an up or down vote, you know, unless you wanted to, you know, offer a, a continuance to come back with something else, but based on what you heard, that, that's not likely to, to come to fruition within the amount of time that you have to decide this.
So, Mr. Corbo, through you, could a vote be made with a contingency that get reviewed by either planning or zoning for one of the issues that was brought up tonight?
Oh, through you, through you, to you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, um, and they'd have to have some jurisdiction. Oh, and I don't know that there is anything that they have jurisdiction over at this point. You know, if these were A&R lots, you know, they don't get to, to make those types of decisions. You know, it is a scenic road, and so if the only other thing they would have jurisdiction over would be if trees need to be cut, then that would require its own process through the tree warden and the, the planning board. But, um, other than that, you know, there's, you could say you want to refer to the planning board, but there's nothing that they have jurisdiction over, there would be no obligation for them to consider this, or, and if they did, I don't know what the, what they would be saying.
And that's because that special permitting process is over. I mean, they had jurisdiction at one point, but they don't now, is that correct?
Right, that, that is correct. That this, these particular lots were not subject to a special permitting process.
So, quick question. Just to confirm that if the board votes no, there's, they can't be forced to put underground by any board or committee in the town?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that, that is my understanding. You know, they could come back to you with underground, they can come back to you with a different location, they can appeal. Those are basically their, their options at this point.
Mr. Townsend?
Chair, just through you to Mr. Corbo, just reconfirm my, my thoughts here. So, if they're going to put these poles in and there were trees that needed to be cut or some other type of landscaping that needed to be altered, then they would have to go to the planning board and have a hearing on that, is that correct, whether it's a scenic road?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that's correct. So, under the scenic road statute, there's the, there's jurisdiction in the tree warden and the planning board if you are trimming or cutting trees within the layout or removing or changing stone walls.
Thank you. All right, would anyone like to make a motion? I see there is no motion, so, um, this is a new one for me, so apparently this, there'll be no vote on the, on the polls.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think we need to do...
I think we have to make a motion.
I think we need to do something here, and we have a lot of information, and it's just a very unfortunate situation. An A&R lot, a Form A lot, that A stands for approval, not required. So, that's why the planning board has no jurisdiction over the newer lots that have gone in as well, just in case people didn't know. So, I'll make the motion that we approve.
We have a motion to approve the six new J.O. poles in the right of way along Indian Street, plan number 15245151, date November 20th, 2023. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any other questions by the board?
So, I have a question, so we talked about maybe having to trim back some of the trees. Before that gets done, does that have to be checked with anybody? I know we've had instances in the past where things were done without letting the board know, like poles put up and things like that, but is there, is there a way that we can...
They, Mr. Corbo, I told us they need to have a, if they're going to, is it cut trees or is it just cut trees? Or are trimming trees included on the requirement for a poll hearing? A scenic road hearing with the planning board and tree warden?
Let me double check the...
Oh, there's Mr. Bott.
I guess apparently we've got Mr. Bott who's, who's, I don't know if we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you fine, I've been listening right along, I lost the signal for a while. Under the, under the street trees, it's only the removal of a street tree. You can trim a tree back. If you've got to cut a tree down that's in the road right of way, that requires a hearing with the tree warden and on a scenic road, the planning board. Trimming trees, not a hearing, just go at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
Okay, so we have a mo, oh, we have...
Oh, so I was going to say, I mean, my preference just, you know, personally is, I would love them to be underground. I think that's, that would be the best option here, but from what I've heard tonight, it doesn't sound like we have a choice as a board, other than go buy what's been presented to us and, and have to vote, yes, for the hammering to put the poles in.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this all happens at the beginning, as someone mentioned. You know, if this was all identified in the beginning and, and the goalposts were set, then we could, there could be proper planning for this.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. No other issues, concerns, or questions? All those in favor of approving the polls, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, five zero. Thank you, everyone. The continued, the poll hearing is now closed. Next item. Well, I'm not sure if it's me, right? Okay, guys, the meeting's not over yet, so we'll just sign those. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Area 58, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Mr. Chair, can we make sure the...
Okay, going to call the meeting back to order. So, the next item up on the agenda, uh, let's see, I believe, Mr. Townsend, you'd recommended this to be put on the agenda, discussion with Eversource regarding pole maintenance and replacement standards and procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Originally, when I requested this as an agenda item, I was under the impression we were going to have folks from the engineering department here, but I'll, but I'll ask anyway, and the reason I asked for this is because at our, the last poll hearing we had, a number of residents mentioned that there were some damaged poles, some different poles, a lot of double poles. And I, and I just wanted to get some clear understanding from, from Eversource. You know, we have a lot of issues when storms come through or people lose power, sometimes they lose it for a long time. And what is your, your plan as far as pole maintenance? When, when a, you know, why, when a pole is damaged? For instance, there's one pole, I saw that the bottom of the pole is actually gone. There, there's a two-foot section from the, the street to the bottom of the pole, and they've taken some strapping and attached that pole to a new pole. When do we update these poles? When do, when, when do we get the wiring from the old damaged poles to the new poles?
Right. So, for the record, again, Philip R., Community Relations, Eversource. So, there's a couple of different things there. So, since I've joined Eversource, I've learned a lot about double poles. I, I actually don't even think I could have told you what a double pole was before I joined Eversource, but I certainly know a lot about them now. So, let's touch on that first, I guess. So, that exact type of circumstance you're talking about, where like a, you know, you see a, a utility pole and maybe a, a chunk, unless we call it chunking, attached to it. So, generally what that means in that set of circumstances goes, again, this is all going to go back to ownership, and it's a very frustrating process, but if you go outside and you look at your utility poles, Eversource is the top. You know, the power lines are at the very top. Everything else that's, that's hanging on those, those utility poles, you know, there's phone, phone, cable, broadband, whatever it might be, different companies own different things up and down those utility poles, so we have no ownership on those things. So, if there's like a car accident, for example, and this gets confusing because certain towns, Eversource, we don't set poles. There are certain towns where it's Verizon's responsibility, so, and I don't know the history of it, as it was explained to me, that it's, it's a pretty antiquated system that was set up decades and decades ago that they didn't want to have, they, being, I guess, the Commonwealth, didn't want one utility company to be in charge of all poles across the state because they thought that that was, you know, I guess, probably monopolizing it. And so, they divided it up amongst different utilities. And so, over the course of time, that's evolved into what it is today, Verizon and, and Eversource. So, there are certain towns where we can't even set a pole without permission from Verizon. And there's a whole handful, like if you take where I'm, I'm on the Cape, so if you take the Cape, for example, about half the towns are, are quote unquote Verizon towns, so Verizon owns the utility pole. So, anyway, if we have a situation where a project gets done and there's new pole sets for that project, or there's a car accident, for example, on a half of a pole, we unfortunately don't have ownership of potentially two-thirds of the stuff that's on that pole, so we were not allowed to do anything with it.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Pitt, you own the pole, correct? The pole is owned by Eversource, the actual telephone...
We may, so in some cases we don't, though. So...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, through, through you, Mr. Chair, so you're telling me in the Town of Carver, as I drive down a road, one pole may be owned by Eversource, the next pole might be owned by Verizon?
No, so in Carver, Eversource owns your poles.
Okay.
But we don't own the, we don't own the equipment, all of the equipment on the pole, is what I'm saying.
So, if there's, so if there's a damaged pole and Eversource comes out and you, you move your wiring onto, onto the new pole that's been put up, who is in charge of calling Verizon or Comcast or whoever else has something on the pole and saying, "Okay, guys, there's a damaged pole out here, you need to get your wiring and move it to the new pole"?
Yes, so I believe, and I'm, I'm not, I believe we make those notifications, but I honestly don't know the, I don't know who is responsible... Yes. So I believe, and I'm, I believe we make those notifications, but I honestly don't know the, I don't know who is responsible for, for coordinating Verizon coming out and doing that. I do know that we have regularly scheduled, because this is an ongoing issue throughout the entire state. There's ongoing meetings that happen every single week between Eversource and Verizon to start, you know, to identify priority locations. And generally, it's a public safety issue. So unfortunately, aesthetics isn't high on the priority list here. We're talking public safety, reliability is gonna be number two. Environmental impacts is probably number three. And again, I, I put these from sort of my perspective. I don't say that that's necessarily Eversource, but I think it's probably the case. Public safety being one, reliability, environment, and then you get down into things like aesthetics. And I think it goes that way for most of the utility companies, too. So if, if a pole is set and, and, and for Verizon's, I'm not gonna speak for Verizon, but I assume from, from their perspective, if the phone line is still attached and it's still working, it's not probably a very high priority for them to spend money to come out. Again, that's my assumption. I'm not a Verizon employee, but that's my, that's my guess on that, is that's why that you see those things remaining. And so there is an ongoing push, and I think it's come from the state to the utility companies to address this. And I do know that we have teams of folks who are literally assigned every single day to going out into communities and addressing double poles. We have a mandate to be doing that. But like, if you have a specific one, it's gonna, the, the main thing, it's gonna come down to like, is it a public safety threat? And if that's the case, I would say the town of Carver would definitely, you know, report that to Eversource, and then, you know, we would come out and, and take a look at it.
So through you, Mr. Chair. The reason I asked for this, not so much, not so much aesthetics. I'm not concerned about every double pole that you see driving down the road. But I do know that when we have a storm, a lot of times we lose power, sometimes very quickly. There are certain areas of towns that lose power real quickly and many times when there's a windstorm. And certainly when I look at some of these poles, certainly the one I'm mentioning, and there, there are, there are others, some of them look like it wouldn't take much of a, a, a push to-
Sure.
To get the, to lose power there. And, and that's why I think it's important that we address it because we, we, you know, we have a duty to residents-
Sure.
When, when they lose that power. And I guess, Mr. Chair, through you again, I would ask that we, we, we find out from you, maybe if we get back to the town administrator, who is in charge of when there's a pole that's damaged and you folks come out and move your wires, who is in charge of calling Verizon and Comcast and whoever else is on there to come move their wires? So I would assume when that's done, after that's done, you have a group, a crew that comes back and removes the damaged pole?
That's my assumption, yeah.
That would be my, but if we could, if we could find out, I think that would be, that would be good to know.
I'm happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
And likewise, do you have a report on the status of the poles in Carver? And could that be provided to the board? As I was driving around looking, I did the same thing. I drove around town. I'm looking, that one doesn't look good. That one doesn't look good. Is there a report that you maintain on the status and, and some kind of a maintenance plan that we could get a copy of?
Yeah, so there is a, an ongoing, there's a contracting company that Eversource uses that is sort of ongoing cycle all the time, going around assessing poles and doing, you know, looking for like insect infestation on a pole or pole integrity. And then that, and that process, it's like a cycle. So essentially, they might come through your community one year and then come back five years later, something like that, as they're moving through the state and doing this all the time. I can look back and, and, you know, see what I can find for information and forward it along to the town if they're, you know, what the most recent assessment was. I, I don't know the, the time on that.
Okay.
I think that would be valuable to have as well.
But if I, if I may, I think one of the things that's really important, though, is if there are ones that are perceived as a public safety issue, a concern that you think that that pole's going down or, you know, it's, it's, it's damaged, it's, it's very possible that we don't know about that. So I would say every town does have access, you know, and generally, it's through like your DPW director or through your police or fire chief to, to make those asks to us pretty easily. They have designated lines that they're set up to, to be able to report stuff to us. And, and then, and every pole has a number on it. So you can go out to the pole and you can see the number, and then you can report that pole to us, and then it'll get, you know, looked at.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
But if there was a double pole, you would know about it, right? Because you would have had to come out to put the other pole up and it, and somehow attach that, that damaged pole.
I mean, I assume so. I assume so. But I think we're talking, you know, there's, I think, probably hundreds of thousands of poles. So I, yeah, I assume that they probably do know, but I, I, I'm not 100% sure.
Do you, do you know, or could you find out if there's some kind of report out there where there are poles that Eversource has moved their wires, but Verizon and Comcast and whoever else might be on that pole have not moved theirs? That must be something you track so you know when to come out and remove the damaged pole, correct?
In, in its totality, you mean, like all of them?
Like, well, in, in Carver, how many poles are in process of, with things being moved?
Yeah, I can ask to find out whether that's a, whether that's a document that exists. I, I really don't know. It's possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Does Mr. Cannon have your contact information? Because I, we could, we could feed things through Mr. Cannon.
I believe I've been forwarded an email from Mr. Burt, and I'll be contacting him tomorrow.
Okay.
Just make sure he has my contact information.
Okay.
I guess, my question to Attorney Corbo, is there anything, like timeframes that through Mass General Law says that if you've got a damaged pole and you put up a new one, the damaged pole has to be removed by a certain amount of time, or?
Yes. So under State law, Chapter 164, Section 34B, the, once you put up a new pole, the damaged pole is supposed to be removed within 90 days.
And is that your common practice?
I, I honestly, I don't know. I really don't know. I mean, I think if you drive around the state of Massachusetts and look, I think you're gonna find that there's double poles and chunked poles everywhere. So I assume, and I, I, my guess is to, to, to counsel's point, is that that's probably why I think that there's a sort of a push on us to be getting on Verizon and Eversource to be, to be moving on this issue. Because I think it's everywhere. I think it's very common that you see these, you'll see chunked poles, you'll see double poles, you'll see damaged poles against regular poles. And I think it all comes back to the point of like, something has gone wrong, the crew has come out, their job is to restore power as quickly as possible and safely as possible. They do it. And then essentially, it's on to the next task, right? And so then all of these things, I think, it's kind of, just kind of get left behind. And I think there's a, a long, long list of it. So I think that that's probably where the, the push has come, that there is, I'm sure, you know, as, as he makes mention to, a requirement, but I, I don't know the, the procedure for that, or, you know, how, how we're addressing that.
Mr.?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, she wins?
Thank you. So is there some way that we can enforce that portion that chapter's 164, Section 34B, Mr. Corbo? I, it's a big question, but if it's there and it's not being done, is that something we would have to get the legislature to act on, or clearly not something we by ourselves can do?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a, if, if you Google "double poles," you will see numerous articles written about the frustration of municipalities all over the Commonwealth in enforcing this 90-day requirement. And some towns have attempted to enact bylaws to implement fines, which have been stricken by the Attorney General's office. And the Supreme Judicial Court has found that municipalities do not have direct enforcement action. So unfortunately, without some intervention by the legislature, you're really left with, you know, the cooperation of the utility companies in fulfilling their, their statutory obligation in good faith.
Thank you.
And anybody else? Questions? Nope, sorry. Soft on you. You were next.
That was my question.
Oh, sorry.
So that's for Eversource, Verizon, Comcast, anybody, correct? Or is that just-
Through you, Mr. Chair. Right, so it goes to the, the owner of the pole. So what it says is that a distribution company engaging in the removal of an existing pole and the existence of a new, of a new pole in its place shall complete the transfer of wires, repairs, and the removal of the existing pole from the site within 90 days from the date of installation of the new pole. Then it says, "The owner of such poles shall notify all other users of the starting date of such removal and installation work at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of the work, and said owner shall require all other users to remove their wiring and other attachments from the poles in a timely manner." So it does go to the, the owner of the pole is not only responsible for removing the old pole, but also for coordinating the removal and transfer of the facilities by whoever else has their equipment on that particular pole.
What about on an instance where it's not replacing a pole, just services gone down, wires have gone down, and Eversource gets the electricity back up at Verizon or Comcast? Because I know we've had some instances with some people called, you know, contacted us that services aren't back 100%. Is there a way that we can enforce that with the Verizons or the Comcast? Or again, does it go back to the owner of the pole, even though it's not a service?
No, because that then relates to the actual service, right? So if you have, you know, three different services on a pole, each entity is going to be responsible for their own portion of that.
Do we have any enforcement of that if we find out it's not being done in a timely manner?
And that would be something, you know, we could go through the Department of Public Utilities for and, you know, try to get them to take enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, I would, I would just ask through you to the town administrator that, that you work with, with Eversource to come up with some kind of report that, that you can get to the board on, on what poles are in process here with power being shifted or, or whatever. Because, you know, everyone knows, we are a rural town. When a windstorm comes through, a lot of people lose power, some for days, not hours. And, and I understand there's a lot of this going on, but we have a duty to, to our residents. And I think that, you know, this has been brought up to us at a couple, a number of meetings now, and I think it's important that we try to look into it and see what we can do to help resolve the situation.
Yeah, I'll be happy to follow up, Mr. Burt.
Thank you.
And just one last point. For the residents at home, when, you know, if I come out of my house and I see that a pole is in disrepair or something, and I want to report it, what is the best practices approach for doing these things? Is it to call you directly and say, hey, pole number 1234, it looks like it's, it's in damaged shape or got hit by a tree or something like that? So, so they call Eversource. It wouldn't be something that the town gets involved in with regards to-
So I, I think it could go both ways. I think both of those things could happen. You could, a resident can make that report. I think if, again, if it gets into a, a situation of life safety, public safety, the request should come from the municipality. I think that that's gonna be the best way to get that addressed. You know, if it's more of an aesthetic thing, I, I think you're gonna have a challenging time having it come, especially from, you know, from a resident on that. But I would-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
Every town has access to, has users. So Carver has a, a series of users in town who have access to information with Eversource as to how to escalate problems or, or whatnot, especially during storm events. And those municipal users, generally it's like your fire chief, your police chief, your DPW director, somebody has been designated as a point person. That's what we try to do so that we can bring that, funnel that information in, in one way. And so I can find out who Carver's point of contact, a single point of contact is, I don't know who that is off the top of my head. But I, I would say having it come through the municipality is the best way to address that.
So you recommend, you would recommend the municipal, notifying the municipality?
Yes.
And then having the municipality notify?
Eversource.
Eversource.
Sorry. Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Chair, I believe what Mr. Burt is referring to is a public safety event, though, right? They're reporting during public safety events. I, I'm not sure that's for routine maintenance of poles.
So, but-
I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
So both situations exist. So there is a very particular one. For, for like a blue sky day, they have, public safety has access to Eversource in a, in a direct way. They have a direct line that they're, you know, no one's allowed, disposed to have. It's a, it's a direct line into Eversource where they can report issues. And they get prioritized based on, same way like a medical call would get prioritized. So like if your fire department, your EMS department has a priority one, a priority two, a priority three, it's based on the, the severity of the injury or the severity of the problem. So a priority one, in, in medical terms, is, is someone's having a heart attack, it's, it's a, a near fatal situation. A priority three might be like leg cramps, right? And I want to get transported to the hospital. It works the, sort of the same way in this world. So if there's a, if there's a wire down on a vehicle and there's somebody trapped in the vehicle, that comes through to Eversource through your point person as a, as a priority one situation. But if a, a resident sees a pole, is, a wire's hanging low, and it's not really posing any immediate threat, that might come through as to us, and it could get reported to us as what would be like an FPS three, what we call an FPS three. So it would be like a lower priority situation. In a storm event, the same sort of rules apply, but they have, your users have access to, your town users, municipal users have access to some software where they can enter all that information and stuff like that. So I think that may be what you're referring to with the storm side of this. We have what's called the municipal hub where users can, during, especially during storms, can, can enter that information in.
Okay. Well, I think to echo Mr. Townsend's request with regards to getting a current list of what you know, what you're currently in the pipeline, would be helpful to make sure the town has it, so we're on the same page, and then we can work with a way of going forward as we keep track of these things.
Okay. Happy to do that.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to disappoint.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next up on the agenda, request for additional ARPA funds for Dell tablets for emergency medical services. Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Kind of ironic that I'm in front of you during EMS week, so that actually works out. The proposal is for an increase for the Dell tablets that were already approved at a prior meeting. When we got the quote originally from Dell, we thought it included the mounting hardware and accessories to mount the equipment into the vehicles, which is something we need to do because it can't be, oops, because it can get broken, everything else. So it has like a data terminal it goes into. When it first got given to us, both myself and the IT manager believed that all that information included all the mounting hardware and accessories. It wasn't until they send, sent a rep out from another company that works with Dell that we realized that the number might go up. So the number increase you see is actually the number increase for the mounting brackets, hardware, and everything to mount everything in the front of the vehicle, to power the, the tablets while they're in the mount so they can stay charged, and everything for all four vehicles, both the two SUVs and the two ambulances.
I would make a motion that we approve the ARPA request for the emergency medical services, the amount of $3,428.05.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Oh, and the other questions, issues, or concerns?
Just, just one. Through you to the town administrator. Would this come from Plymouth County funds or federal funds?
Sorry. The project was previously approved through Plymouth County funds, so for right now, it should probably get approved under that.
Thank you.
Transfer that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now we've got the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA project status update.
Ms. Weston?
All right. So for the ARPA update, the American Rescue Plan Act, we have an update on additional projects, the current existing projects and additional ones that have been approved. On this total sheet, you can see that under Plymouth County, our balance remaining is negative. So we have used all the money right now. All the projects have not been submitted yet for approval. So it is possible some could get rejected, and we do have additional funds left under federal funding. This is just a listing of what's been completed. So I'm going to skip over that because you've already gone through all those. And I'm gonna go to the listing of these projects that are pending Plymouth County approval. We have the, oh, okay, the municipal building well corrosion. Okay, I see where, I made an error, and I'm sorry. This well corrosion that I added in here, I actually added in at the end of the other update. So I apologize for that. What happened was this- at the end of the other update. So I apologize for that. What happened was this application went in to Plymouth County by error before it got started. So when it gets submitted to Plymouth County, it has to be completed and you have to have all the receipts. So this application went in prior to that happening. So I, it didn't get taken off this list, so I apologize. So the update on this is actually later on, so I'm going to retract what I said about being over, because I double counted that 61,000. So there's a balance of about 52,000 in the Plymouth County fund, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
The fiber loop for the town, that 211,395.93, that is being resubmitted this week. That got kicked back to us for insufficient documentation. The E911 also got kicked back to us, and that already has been resubmitted, and we're waiting for approval from Plymouth County on that one. This listing right here, there's actually two pages of 15 items that, where the money has been approved and it has not been submitted. I'm going to go through those individually for you, so you don't have to read this small writing. So the first item is the communication tower in South Carver. This is almost to completion. It is estimated to be complete early summer. The town hall tech conference room upgrades, that, these are pictures of the room you're sitting in right now, the 157,0023344 was just finished, and we're waiting on the last invoice. You're going to see the same update for the EOC. There, they were worked on simultaneously by OKERS, the company that did it. So this last invoice is basically their payroll form. They have to wait for the payroll to get submitted, then that goes on the invoice. So it takes a little longer than a normal company processing an invoice. The North Carver Water Connection Meter for 225,000, this is out to bid. Bids are due June 5th. We did get an estimation on what it could cost, which was well over this 225, so we will know once the bids come in and they award it. Their Middle Borough, when I say they, is anticipating to award this by June 19th. Number four is the middle school installation of the mechanical system for 180,000. Operations and Maintenance is preparing this to go out to bid now, so that way they could get the bids in and hopefully get the work started over the summer while there's no children in the school. Council on Aging, their kitchen equipment, these are pictures of the installed equipment. They are waiting on the warming station part, for the warming station to be operational. Otherwise, it is operating and functioning nicely. The E911 telecommunications upgrade for 7,735.55. So in order to, at first they were having problems with the trunk system, with TPX, they worked that out. Now they're trying to match up each line with a name for the E911 system. So once they get all of that worked out, then they'll be able to complete it, and that's anticipated to be completed by the end of June. The EOC, this is a picture of the Emergency Operations Center in the basement. They got their technology upgrades and new furniture, and this was completed Friday, and we're waiting on that final invoice, which is going to coincide with hopefully the invoice for this conference room as well. Number eight is the outside deck at the Council on Aging. We are going to be reviewing this to see the viability of it. We have run into issues with the proposed location. There's, there is another potential for another location of the deck, but with the construction going on, additional parking needed, it's unclear right now. Additional funding might be needed for an engineering plan. So we're going to, Glenn and Karen and myself are going to discuss this next week to see the best way to move forward for that. Items number nine and 10 are electric vehicles, have been purchased off the state bid list, and the dealership is awaiting delivery of the vehicles. Number 11, decommissioning of the 22 private wells. We're in the process of getting the three quotes. This was the same update last time. They only received one quote. So they have to go and request additional quotes, and then if they don't get any additional quotes the second time, then they can use that one quote. But this is procurement best practices. Number 12, purchase of Smartboard and cart. They again are in the process of getting the three quotes. They only received one quote. Then they, they are in the process of, I'm sorry, seeking additional quotes as well. So this addition, originally was anticipated to start in May, so we just bumped it up to June. The Dell Latitude Tablets, you just approved additional money for this, so for your next update, that amount will be added in. While they were in the process of getting the three quotes for this, they received an additional quote. They're evaluating to turn, determine what components of that additional quote they can work in to see which quote is the best. So the way that was explained to me is, it's not just like it was a bottom line quote, and they can determine this one is better. They have to go through each item and decide. They want all those components that were in the quote. The Outdoor Election Dropbox and Installation that was ordered, and we're awaiting delivery. And this is a repeat, like I said at the beginning. So if you subtract out that 61,000 from the total, we actually have a balance of 52,000 and change for the balance of Plymouth County funds. So I apologize for that. The federal approved projects, a few of these were pending prior. On the top half of that sheet, they are now all complete. So the North Carver Water Membranes, the Middle High School Culinary Project, that's complete. The Ballistic Protection, that has been received. The Speed Alert message signs have been received, and the EOC furniture, like you saw in the picture before, has been received. So all of those projects are now complete. We are just waiting on invoices for the fire upgrade computers, and the bylaws, we're waiting for approval at town meeting. And that concludes the update. Do you have any questions on anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Townsend.
Through you. I know Plymouth County has changed the dates that we have to have submissions in by. They, they seem to keep extending it. What is the date now?
September 30th, 2024.
Okay.
Have, have they given you any hints that could be extended again?
No.
No. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So that, that date, is that the date that we have to have all the information into them? So all the, all the quotes, everything has to be into them by that date?
So once a project gets approved, like you approved that, the additional funding, so tomorrow morning, I'll email the other ARPA approved person who goes into the system. She will fill out an application. So once that application gets filled out, that's considered committing the funds. So she will put in the additional funding, so that a project will go from 12,000 to about 16,000. So those additional funds will then be considered committed in the Plymouth County system.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, through you. I know at one time when we talked to, I forget whether it was Tom O'Brien or somebody at Plymouth County about ARPA, they had indicated that when we got to the end of the submission process, that, that the audit was likely that there was going to be some additional monies the towns could apply for. Have they had any further communications whether that might be the case, or?
No, I know they are looking at this deadline for any towns that have not used their monies to reallocate to other towns.
Okay. I, I was just, I was just thinking that that would be a really good use for perhaps any overages that come in on the meter pit since it's something they've already approved.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you for the update. All right, next item on the list, discussion on possible vote and warrant articles for annual town meeting. First item up is Article 5. My, my thought process is that this could be something that gets affected by the additional research needed to see if we can fund the Cranberry Village payment. Could affect capital. Is this something that we want to vote on tonight or hold off until we have a firm and deciding while the funds are coming in?
I guess we could hold off. We, we've already voted to put it on the warrant. We just haven't voted to recommend it.
I don't think we've voted to put it on the warrant.
So we could make a motion to put it on the warrant?
Without a number, yeah.
Without a number. So I'll move that Article 5, or the capital improvement budget article be placed on the warrant?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero. Okay, next item on the agenda. Let's see, it's on 15. Okay. Let's go. It's a 15 or a 60? 60 on the, on the, on the warrant, right?
Yeah, the numbering could be wrong.
Okay. Increase in lot size and frontage, to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw, section 2320, table of dimensional requirements to increase lot size from 60,000 square feet to, to acres, 87,120 square feet, and to increase frontage from 150 feet to 200 feet in the IRA zoning district in order to protect resources as recommended in the 2001 Carver master plan as shown below, with additions shown in bold and deletions shown in, I guess they're striking that out, or take action relative thereto.
So, so the chair, I guess, is the, is the recommendation or the, the status that the board does not take a vote to place this on the warrant? It's, you know, we don't, I don't know what the wording is, but it's, it's automatic. If the planning board voted to put it on, then it's automatically on the warrant, and we don't have to take another vote?
I think there was a disputing facts with that, with that position.
Okay.
I know there were, luckily we have Attorney Corbo here-
All right.
-to address that issue.
Answer that question.
Yes, that, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, there, there is a process by which a zoning bylaw gets on the, the town meeting warrant. It can start with, with the select board, or the planning board, or a citizen's petition. Then it has to go through the, the public hearing process, et cetera. But at the end of that process, it's still the select board's warrant. And regardless, unless it's by citizen petition, the select board has discretion as to what articles to put on the warrant and what articles not to put on the warrant. So in this instance, it's a sort of a strange situation where the planning board is asking you to put something on the warrant that they don't support. But, so it's, it remains up to you to decide, you know, yes, we will honor the planning board's request and put this on the warrant and, and see what happens at town meeting. Or no, you know, it's, it's our warrant. We don't, we have enough to do at town meeting. We don't want to waste their time. We're not going to put this on. But I would suggest a vote one way or the other.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Stewart.
Are we, we're having a discussion, right, about this?
Then no motion.
Um, we, we could follow the process, make a motion with a second, then have a discussion if you want. We can have an informal discussion now.
Okay, no, whatever you want.
We can have an informal discussion now.
Well, okay, thank you. I was just going to say that I know I spoke on this last time. I am completely not in favor of this article. Apparently, the planning board isn't either. My memory, though, is that we asked them, as fellow elected officials, whether they would reconsider not putting it on the warrant, if that's the right way to say it. Do we know whether or not they've done that?
I believe, Mr. Gannon, um-
Mr. Chair. I, I do believe that the, the town planner went back to the planning board and asked them to consider whether or not they wanted it on the warrant or not. And they did confirm they wanted it on the warrant, but then they still voted against the article.
And this was the reorganized planning board after, after the election?
Yeah, that was after the reorganization. Okay. So I guess my feeling is that even though they're against it, and I am 100 percent against it, I think we should probably respect their request to have it on the warrant. I'm, it, it doesn't make any sense to me, but that is what they're asking for.
So I'll make a motion, I guess, to place proposed article for increased lot size and frontage on the warrant.
So now we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, and we, and we have a second. Are there any other questions, issues or concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Whoa, Mr. Townsend.
I haven't read the article, so I don't have a lot of information on the article. But I just think it sets a really bad precedent for us to put articles on the warrant that an elected board that's requesting the article has voted not to recommend. I, I think that sets a really bad precedent. I can't remember it being done at any time that I've been on the board.
Yeah.
So I-
That's a good point.
I, I would be against putting this on the warrant.
So I have two questions. So first, I refer to Sarah and to Mark. Have you ever been involved with a article that the select board voted not to put on a town meeting? Arlene, have you heard of? My, my issue is setting a precedent as well. If someone has approached us with an article, whether or not they approved it or not, they did present it, and the board's saying no. I, I, I understand we have that authority, but-
Mr. Chairman, through you. Yes, I think it was either last year or the year before, I think it was last year, that we voted not to put the finance committee article on the warrant. So we have, we have voted not to put articles on warrants, on the warrant before.
But, but Mr. Hoffman has a good point that we voted to put articles on the warrant and then not recommended them.
Yes.
So there's that option as well.
My, my second question, sorry. My, my second question is, do you know if the planning board, did they, did they vote, they voted to put it on the artic, I'm sorry, to submit it? Was that a three to two vote, too? Do you, do you know what the vote was of that?
I do not know.
I'm going by memory, but I thought it was a unanimous vote.
To, to put it on the warrant.
To put it on the warrant.
Even though they're still against it.
Even though they were against it.
So majority was against it, but they unanimously voted to put it on?
And I'm only going by what-
I just want to-
Yeah.
I'm only going by what the town planner said, excuse me, Mr. Hoffman, was that, that one of the reasons was to get a, to have a hearing, a public hearing on it, which they did have. I don't know the results of that public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan?
Well, they, oh, I'm sorry. They had a public hearing, and that's where the public spoke, and then they voted two to three against the article.
Okay.
But I don't know if they're having another one.
I have a, you have a comment and a question? So I, I think that their intent was that to let the voters decide. It sounded to me that they said, we want to put this on the warrant because we'd like the citizens of Carver to weigh in their, you know, opinion on this and vote on it irrespective of their opinion. So that, in that, you know, light, that's why I, I made a motion to put it on the, on the warrant, because if they want to let the, you know, the citizens weigh in on a town meeting, that, you know, that I guess it could be an interesting debate. But then my question is, would this get approved? I mean, if this were to go forward to the Attorney General's office, is there, is there anything with the article, the way it's written, whether, even if the town were to vote it to go forward? Is there any ramifications of voting something today like, like this?
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, I know at the public hearing, our building commissioner spoke on it, and it was his opinion, or no, he had, he wrote a letter, and Mr. Bott read the letter. And his opinion was that it would make all the lots non-conforming, all of the lots existing now, non-conforming, if it were approved.
Maybe that's leading into our vote to recommend. Maybe my question is best safe for that. But right now, we're voting whether to put it on the warrant or not, whether we believe that. If the citizens were to give voice to this, would we?
Be scary.
Would we?
Yes.
Or not.
Mr. Chair, just to Mr. Ryan's point, normally, we don't make recommendations on planning board articles, whether to recommend or not. Normally, we just put them, put them on the warrant.
Okay.
So, we could.
But we could.
But we could, but we normally don't.
I had a quick question, and, and something to do with, Mr. Hoffman had said, was that, I mean, if a planning board or some other board member comes to us and votes that they want something, and, and the affirmative, and we put it on the warrant, yeah, if we voted, we could vote against it. You were saying that the select board in the past might have come up with their own warrant article and then voted against it and put it on the warrant? Or was it another department?
Another department.
Another department. So that's, that can happen. Another department comes in and says, I want this to, we approve this, we put it on the warrant, and we vote against it for whatever reason.
But, but what I meant was, did we not, did the board vote not to put it on?
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, through you, that happened just last year with the finance committee bylaw. I believe it was last year.
I think they withdrew it, though.
No, no, they didn't. We, it was a meeting over at the fire station, and, I mean, Mr. Corbo was, was there for that, for that. And we went back and forth a long time. And I, I, again, I, I believe we voted not to put it on the warrant. I believe that was the vote.
Maybe Mr. Corbo should weigh in here. Do you have any thoughts?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Nope, that one is beyond my pay grade. Whether or not you choose to put it on is, is completely a, a policy decision for this, this board to make. I think you all make a number of, you know, good points for and against. And, you know, obviously, you know, what you do does not necessarily set legal precedent. obviously, you know, what you do does not necessarily set legal precedent, but I think, you know, if you're going to do something different than your past practice, that will likely affect what you continue doing going forward.
And, and just for clarification on something Mr. Ryan had said, and that is, Massachusetts is an area where they're promoting housing and things of that nature, so if this was to go on the warrant, got voted at town meeting, goes to the legislature for, would it go to the legislature for approval?
Attorney General.
So, yeah, through you, it goes, it goes to the, the Attorney General's office, and, I mean, interestingly, if you read their synopsis, it's a very sort of negative synopsis of the, of the proposed bylaw, and, you know, I don't know that the Attorney General would, would uphold this on the basis of trying to exclude development or housing, but I couldn't really speak to, you know, how they would act. And then if the Attorney General approves it, then it becomes a bylaw of the town, and, and it's got to be enforced that way, and for as long as it remains in effect.
And so, Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. So through you, to Town Council, so I have two questions. If in fact, the building commissioner is correct, and I believe he is, that this would make all the other existing lots non-conforming, and if this bylaw were to pass, it would actually not promote more housing, but less housing and more expensive housing. That's the exclusionary zoning, that's what exclusionary zoning does. I can't imagine the Attorney General would, would approve it on the basis of it creating more housing, and making all the lots in town non-conforming. Do you see my question?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
I know you can't answer for the Attorney General, but.
Right, obviously, I can't answer for the Attorney General, but, you know, I have seen, seen court cases where courts have, you know, stricken down bylaws as, as being, I think they've used constitutional grounds to say that, you know, this is an impermissible rate of development bylaw, and that its sole purpose is really to curb development, which, you know, might impact the constitutional rights of, of residents. But, you know, obviously, I don't want to start going down that road of trying to predict, you know, what ultimately the Attorney General's office would do, but, yeah, I think there would be reason for concern here. You know, people have, have purchased lots, you know, in reliance on being able to build at some point, and are now being told, oh no, you're, you don't have enough, and there is definitely some concern over a, a scenario like that.
Okay, so we have a, am I correct, we have a motion, and we have a second?
Correct.
To put Article 16 on the warrant. Any other questions, issues, or concerns?
I would just, I would just ask the Board to consider the precedent they would be setting if they put a article on the warrant that a, another elected board has voted not to recommend. I think that sets a precedent that we haven't set before.
I'm sorry, Mr. Townsend, what's the precedent that you're concerned about again?
I think we're putting an article on the warrant that a board, an elected board has voted not to recommend, and I don't recall ever doing that before.
Okay, I thought you said you were afraid we were setting a precedent if we didn't put the article on, because they were.
I think we're setting a precedent if we vote to put the article on the warrant.
Okay.
I would recommend we don't put the article on.
Thank you.
Okay, time for the vote. All those in favor of putting Article 16 on the warrant, say aye. Opposed? Aye. Zero five. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda. We moved up the, okay, that's fine. We have the appointment of registrars, Jeanne Taylor to a three-year term expiring. Oh, sorry.
Two bullets in there, are we skipping?
I guess the approval of the town meeting warrant, is that something we need to do with it changing?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we recommend that we table that.
Okay.
Correct, it is on Thursday's agenda.
So we'll table that. Again, next item, the appointment of registrars, Jeanne Taylor, three-year term expiring June 30th, 2027.
I make a motion that we appoint Jeanne Taylor to the Board of Registrars.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Next item, appointment of Plymouth County Advisory Board Member.
Mr. Chairman, I've been the Plymouth County Advisory Board Member since I first joined the Board, and I'd like to continue if the Board would permit me to.
Make a motion to appoint Mark Townsend as our appointment for the Plymouth County Advisory Board Member.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any other issues, questions, or concerns?
Last chance.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Next item on the agenda, this corrects a procedural issue to reaffirm the unanimous votes taken on April 30th, 2024, for reorganization of the Select Board and approval of minutes of April 9th, 2024, the executive session not to be released, the April 16th, 2024, and April 22nd, 2004 meeting, as well as the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Motion to reaffirm those unanimous votes.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero, five zero. Next, this is going along, this is going along much faster now. We have the town administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to say, I believe today is my one week, first week on the job. I will tell you that staff and the residents have made me feel very welcome. I have a lot to get up to speed on, and there's a lot of information coming at me, but again, my meetings are very positive, and it's been a pleasure this week of, you know, meetings with, again, staff and the Select Board and residents, too. So with that, I'll jump right into it. The high school culinary classroom project is complete, and this was funded with ARPA funds. The HVAC project, library is also complete. The roof bids for the library and Town Hall have been received and awarded to Cape Cod builders. We should be signing a contract in the next week or so, and the work will start in approximately one month. There may be offices that will need to temporarily relocate while the roof work is being done. We'll put notice on the website if this happens, there'll be a lot of public outreach for that, obviously, you can, so there'll be a lot of impacts to that. And then the Veterans Department has announced that the annual Memorial Day Parade will step off at 9:30 at the Sons of Veterans Hall. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. All right, next item, we have the approval of the minutes for April 23rd, 2024, April 30th, 2024, and May 7th, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 23rd.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Five zero.
Motion to approve the minutes of April 30th?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, zero. And the May 7th?
Motion to approve the minutes of May 7th.
Do we have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, approval of harvest triathlon, June 9th, 2024, between 7:00 and 10:00 a.m. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Next, we have an approval of a license for one day, one day special for St. John's the Baptist Club, June 23rd and 24th, 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Let's see, next, we've got Select Board announcements, Ms. Hewens?
Oh, thank you. First, I wanted to welcome Glenn Cannon. It's very nice to have you here. We appreciate everything you do. You also mentioned the Memorial Day Parade, and they do step off at 9:30 on Memorial Day. And finally, I want, I'd like everyone to remember Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry.
Ms. Hoffman?
I also would like to welcome Mr. Cannon to the town, and I know you're going to do a great job, and look forward to working with you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
I'd also like to welcome Mr. Cannon, and remind people to attend the Memorial Day Parade, and something on June 4th, that's going, what's happening on June 4th? So please remember to attend our annual town meeting on June 4th, thank you.
At the middle high school.
At the middle high school.
At 6:30.
Mr. Townsend?
I will just join the rest of the Board in welcoming you, Mr. Cannon. Welcome, and I would also invite everyone to the Memorial Day Parade, hope we see you there.
Great, I would just echo those thoughts, except for one, I can't wait to start on the 2026 budget. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. Thank you, and good night.
Next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, before you do that, don't we have a meeting on Thursday?
Let's see, next meeting, sitting here, yep, we do have one scheduled for Thursday, and that, that's at 8 o'clock?
Yes.
8 a.m.
And that's this coming Thursday?
23rd.
At 8 a.m. Okay, thank you.
So that will be our next meeting. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric 58.